We'll call this meeting to order.
I got energy today.
Adam, what do we have?
All right, starting out. Item number one here, Department of Recreation and Parks report relative to the Casa Permanente Operation Splash Program 2013 grant application and a supplemental program for Casa Permanente's Refill Your Dream campaign, Council File Number 09-0821.
Actually, we're showing items one through eight and 10 recommended for consent. I don't see any cards on these items. Do you concur, Mr. Reyes? One through eight and 10 on consent? Okay, those items will be recommended for approval on consent. And that takes us to item number... Well, before I do item number nine... Wait, item number nine is a Prop K report. We can do item number nine. So if somebody has... Wants to give a report on item number nine very quickly, please.
Item number nine is L.A. for Kids Steering Committee Report Ordinance of Intention and Resolution of Intention Relative to Proposed Proposition K Assessment for Fiscal Year 2013-14 and Related Actions.
Good morning. Bernice Hollands, Office of the C.A.O. representing the L.A. for Kids Steering Committee. As this body is aware, each year, the Steering Committee recommends the Proposition K Assessment Report that includes adjustments to the current year budget and the proposed expenditure plan for the upcoming year. As in prior years, the majority of funds are proposed for capital development with a balance used for administration, maintenance, and debt service on bonded projects. The most noteworthy component of the proposed budget is the award of $26.6 million in Proposition K competitive funds that are available through the eighth funding cycle that will cover three fiscal years, 2013-14 through 2015-16. These competitive awards recommendations are largely reflective of the funding priorities provided by council pointies that would participate in this year's funding deliberations. In terms of general fund impact, the majority of projects funded on the program are operated by the Department of Recreation and Parks. Based on estimates provided by the department, we estimate the general fund impact to $6.4 million once all projects that are in various phases of development come online. These costs would be addressed through the annual city budget process once projects... as projects are coming online each year. In terms of revenues projected for the upcoming fiscal year, the program will reimburse the general fund for an estimated $4 million for administration, facility maintenance, and project delivery cost.
Mr. Reyes, did you have any questions?
No.
I don't have any questions. Did you want to add something? You're here just for backup? Okay. All right. Then if Mr. Reyes doesn't have any objections, we would send that matter to council with our recommendation for approval. Okay, item number 11.
Thank you.
Item number 11, Chief Legislative Analyst Stash Report Relative to the Autry National Center and Southwest Museum. This item is also referred to the Legend Finance Committee.
Okay, we have a number of cards on this. Is the C.A.O. and C.L.A. prepared to report? Why don't you give your report before the public comment?
Andrea Galvin, C.L.A. Before you today is a status report on recent discussions between city staff and stakeholders of the Southwest Museum, the city's first museum...
Why don't you speak into the mic a little more?
...which is owned and operated by the Autry National Center.
Pull it down a little bit. There you go.
See, I'm not the expert, you know? Since our first meeting in September of 2012, we have met as a larger group three times while some smaller group meetings have taken place as well. Currently, city staff is awaiting an update from Gruen Associates, which was contracted by the Bureau of Engineering, as to what it would take to renovate the buildings and bring them up to code. This report, we expect to be released in June of 2013, so next month. Once released, the discussions can continue as to what the future of the museum will be. And we're here for any questions you have.
First, I just want to thank the staff for focusing on this very important facility. It's, as we all know, the first library of the city of L.A., by the first librarian, and it has a historic significance that we should embrace. So we're hoping these are the first real steps in looking at cost issues as well as strategies for future funding and how we are able to embrace this facility for its significance, not only to the northeast but to the whole region. So that is a critical step that we're taking, so I want to thank the staff for that. I do want to acknowledge we have here with us Stephanie Romero from Assemblymember Jimmy Goman's office. Thank you for joining us. We also have... I want to thank Ramon Soto from the Sales Office for his hard work and the Engineering Department for stepping up. And I look forward to having my colleagues visit the museum with me in the next few weeks so they could essentially understand... You have to see it, you have to be there, understand what this building means, and I'm hoping that my colleagues can go. And Councilmember, you're invited. Hopefully, in your busy schedule, have lunch over there and walk through the facility and you'll be able to embrace that. But with that, perhaps we can have the C.A.O. give their report?
Ramon Soto with the C.A.O.'s office. At this point, I don't think I have anything else to add. Andrea gave a short summary as to where we are and how we got here. It's been a long process, you know? Going back a couple of years, initiating with a council motion on to bring together various stakeholders to discuss the matter and see how... What steps could be taken to bring the Southwest Museum up to speed, essentially? So it's... The situation is ongoing, is in process. As Andrea said, there is a study that's being conducted by B.O.E. at this point to find out exactly how much it would cost to renovate the Southwest Museum. And I guess when that is completed, then we'll be in a better position to weigh our options.
Thank you.
Okay, I understand there's a Public Records Act request that is pending or what is the situation? I'm just looking at this bulky document. Can anybody speak to that?
In connection with Council File 11-0928-S1, which was, I believe, a sequel.
Oh, it's not this item?
It is, and I found that out after I got...
Oh. What item is it?
It's not on our agenda.
Oh, it's not on our agenda? Okay.
It is... It does deal with some of the issues that go on, but it's not agendaized. But it's a private...
Is there Representative Attorney Daniel Wright? Are you Daniel Wright? Okay, is this related to this item?
Probably it's more proper to speak to the General Public Committee.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, because he had item number 11. Okay, great. Okay, then I think we should take public comment at this time. Let's start with Diana Roth. Is it Roth? Thank you. After Diana, we have Marie Leong. And Nancy Lilly.
I believe it's been a year since the last meeting, almost a year, if not a year, of the Arts and Parks and Recreation... or Arts and Parks and Health and Aging Committee, and many of us appeared to speak on behalf of saving the Southwest Museum. It's an important landmark in our community. We pass it as we come up from the downtown area to our homes. And as a resident of 25 years in my current house in Highland Park, I am deeply concerned about the lack of interest that the city council has shown protecting this historical monument to the early years of our city. And I'm very disappointed that this issue has not been handled more quickly by the city council. I think it shows a disrespect for the citizens, for the residents of Highland Park, of northeast Los Angeles, and I am very sorry to watch the city allow an important monument, an important landmark, just be lost and to have allowed the Autry to grasp into its hands the valuable collection that was a part of the city for so long. I realize these are not pleasant comments, but at this point, after so many years of struggle on behalf of a heritage of the entire city, to be treated with so little regard, it's very disappointing. I thank you for your time. I know that's not a very valuable statement, but it is an emotional statement, and I think it expresses the feeling of many people at Highland Park.
Thank you. Oga Hall? After Oga, we have Amy Booth-Green.
Good morning.
Hi.
What is it? Results are measured, and as I see it, we have... You have had a lot of work, which I'm thankful that you have done, but what are the results? It seems like we are still in square one. And it has to be more effort from the city to really save this monument because it speaks... Other countries save their history, save their legacy. Why isn't that we are so poor about, you know, doing what is should be saved? The Autry was not going to ever come to the table. If they're not in control, they're not going to be there to negotiate because they don't want to negotiate. Their mentality is of the kind of people that come and take whatever they want, just like their ancestors came and took so much from the Indians. It's the same thing. We go back, that's the kind of mentality, and you're not going to change it. City has the power to change this if they really want to, and that's what I would like to see done. You know, I thank you for what you've done. You have exposed more to the people what is happening, but we are still not strong enough to go and get it back because that's why we have to do, save it, save the history, save the legacy. And I hope you really continue, even if not as a council member, as a person, to save this museum because it is valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Booth-Green? After Amy, we have Anne Walnam? Please come forward with it. Okay. Amy?
Thank you very much for everything that you've done, and I just... I have to agree with the statements that were just made. This is the chance to make a difference in a history that has been very disrespectful to the Native Americans and to the city's history. And I just hope that you will do something to help preserve it for the future, for the children, and for everything. I know that there is work being done, but please, for the future and for the children and for this legacy that is... That belongs to the people of City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Walnam?
Good morning. I think I approached this with a certain sadness that Councilwoman Alarcon and Councilwoman Reyes will not be on the council in what I consider too short a time. And I thank you for all the support you've given us. Okay, as we consider the future of Southwest Museum, let us consider its positives: a beautiful building in a dramatic setting with spectacular views, the metro ready to bring the world to its door, world-renowned, close to downtown, two beautiful patios for special events. When the dioramas come back to the tunnel entrance, that entrance will be a small museum in itself, spray auditorium with its amazing musical acoustics. Using a recently created plan, the whole building can be utilized for the public, including the towers. There is the synergy with nearby facilities, including Audubon, Sycamore Grove, and the River Center, a proud community with every other house sporting a new coat of paint, and realtors rating Highland Park as one of the top 10 areas in Los Angeles. Authenticity, not glitz. Not everyone thrives on pink and purple neon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Williams?
Good morning. Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council. Loomis. Loomis was a very important person. We've been celebrating his presence, still remaining in northeast L.A. Southwest Museum, Heritage Square, the districts, the historic districts, the historic buildings that are now becoming popular. What is the position of the Southwest Museum? I hear that Rexon Park has over $100 million in Quimby funds. It used to be 125 million, I think. And where does the interest from that go? It goes to the General Fund Finance Department. Why not use some of the Quimby funds to do physical changes, improvements, restoration within the Southwest Museum?
Are you... 125 million in Quimby funds eligible for the Southwest Museum?
I don't know.
Quimby funds are dedicated... Are you talking about their entire fund? They're dedicated to the particular park?
I don't expect $100 million to go into the Southwest Museum.
No, but the Quimby funds are dedicated... They have to be used within a... Essentially, a five...
Within two miles, I think.
Yeah, of the park where they're generated. Are you suggesting that there's $125 million in Quimby funds within two miles of Southwest Museum?
No. How about the interest from that? $125 million? Say 10% interest?
I just want to make... I don't want people to get the impression that 125 million that Southwest is eligible for.
Yeah, I understand that part. And it's usually a two-mile radius, so...
So you did know that, but you didn't fully inform the public?
Yeah.
That's not right.
But...
You sound like a politician.
But can Quimby funds be used for the Southwest, for the physical plant, not for operations and maintenance? But part of it is, is it a... Is the structure eligible for any Quimby funds if they were available? And could they be used to do physical improvements of the structure? Thank you.
That's a good question. Robert Brody? After Robert, we have Daniel Wright.
Good morning and thank you for your time. I am one of the friends of the Southwest Museum, and of all the things that strikes me right in the gut is how the Griffith Park District can be compared to the community of Highland Park, Cypress Park, and the surrounding areas. We are a community of people and voters. As much as I love to go to Griffith Park, its monkey zoos, elephants, the Autry, and some other things, including golf, I can't see how that is equal on any level to what happens to a community in our city. And I want to also mention that from a cost-effective issue, has anyone ever looked at the loss of revenue, of traffic, of business to the northeast because the museum is closed and we have a wonderful train stop at the base that was put there to give more life to the museum? It blows me away how we spend money and then turn our back on the reality of why we spend it to begin with. So I'm hoping that the city can take a more positive view as to what to do with the museum and actually hold the Autry's feet to the fire for completely reneging on the agreement that was originally made to have a viable museum with its own director. Because that's the issue, and no one talks about it. Now it's in the lap of the city. The Autry did a great job of stealing the Southwest Museum's history, its name, and its collection. I get you. It's the second art of the estate steal. The first one was in Philadelphia at the Barnes Foundation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Daniel Wright.
Good morning, councilmembers. Daniel Wright of the Friends of the Southwest Museum. We want to thank this committee and the city council for its support of a city-family task force to study ways to support restoring the Southwest Museum as a fully functioning museum exhibiting its collection. There is no equity in the current status of the Autry's position that they should be able to pay nothing for these assets that they're entrusted with by the people of the state of California for which they owe nothing to the original site, the place that's authentic. The collection is so large, it is feasible to exhibit this collection in both locations. We strongly support Councilmember Reyes's effort to restart a positive and collaborative effort to restore the Southwest Museum building, including the $50,000 Bureau of Engineering study that's currently underway, and I see that Bill Lee has arrived from Bureau of Engineering. I also want to remember Councilmember Alarcon's strong vetoing when this committee was first considering the formation of a task force when Autry attempted to control the task force by packing it with people from the museum industry. However, when Autry was unable to control the committee's task force, they walked away in a huff. That is not, I would suggest, the behavior of a responsible corporate citizen, especially one who is sitting on the land of the taxpayers and who books an annual subsidy from the taxpayers of the city of about $250,000. In fact, I would say it's positively ungrateful. So how do we move forward from here? We look forward to the Bureau of Engineering Task Force, but it appears that the Autry has proven to this committee that it understands only power and money, and the time has come, as the voices you've heard today say, it is time for the Autry to understand a little bit more of the power of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment on this item.
If I may, Councilmember?
Sure.
One is that if I make my comments, Mr. Lee did just arrive. I want to thank you, Mr. Lee, and would you be in a position to give us a status report on where we're at with the study, knowing that we still have more work to do?
Certainly.
Okay.
Bill Lee, Bureau of Engineering. Just last week, we received the first draft of the reports. These are update reports for the Casa de Adobe and also for the Southwest Museum. However, there are some components that are incomplete, so we're continuing to work with the consultant on that. So this is the first draft. That's what we have currently.
Okay, and I want to thank you for your hard work because I know you're working very diligently. There's a clock that's ticking, and you've been very responsive, very professional. I want to thank you for your work in bringing us to this point. Colleagues, folks in the audience, what we have in front of us is a real attempt to identify a path towards a solution. We embrace the fact that this building needs to be upgraded, it needs to be preserved, and it needs to have a place in our history because it has had a critical role throughout this city's life. So that, I think, there is no doubt in that. And I understand the anxiety and I understand the disappointment from those who have spoken. I realize how frustrated you must be. I did inherit this challenge a year and a half ago. Not even a year and a half. It's been, what, eight months?
July.
July, one, so 11 months feels like a year and a half. The fact is, we are in a position to frame this issue in a way in which it is up to the council and the mayor of the city, whether it's in this term or next term, to come forward and embrace this facility for what it could be. The work that Mr. Lee is doing and the rest of the city family is to give us a framework to work with, a framework that gives us a sense of cost, a sense of uses, and to allow for the communities to provide a vision that speaks to its healthy return. And that's the goal. So I have been trying to establish this dialogue, and I think it's a healthy dialogue. We did get access to the museum. We have had ability to work together. We have been working with the working group. There has been real observations that can be formulated to a place where we can have strategic solutions, and all of this is happening now. It is taking long. The clock is ticking for me, but I strongly believe the momentum of this process is going to carry it forward and that the information we have from our engineering department by early June will give us enough time to look at this as a council and see how strategically we can move forward and allow for this facility to come back to life. So I grew up with this museum, and I understand what it means to our kids, understand what it means to our history. Throughout my 20 years, I've dedicated my work in building the infrastructure to make us a healthier place, and you can see it in the rail lines and the parks and the Audubon and all the different facilities that surround this iconic structure. And that's where I believe we're going to continue to go. So I appreciate both the positive and the negative, but I also know that in this council member, and I believe in this council, we're going to continue to move forward and we're going to continue to see some traction. And with the study being completed, we'll have a much clearer way to address the challenge. And it is going to be about money, and it's going to be about cooperation, and it's going to be about how we can work together to make this happen. So I thank you for being here, and I thank you for your patience, but I'm not going to give up, and I appreciate your disappointment, but I also embrace your energy, your positive thinking, and I know we can make good things happen. So I want to thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Yeah, I... Go ahead.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Alarcon, but Mr. Reyes, for all your work growing up in the neighborhood and having the opportunity to fight for the district, which is very important in the evolution of so many areas, from land use to the Los Angeles River to parks and open space. This particular case here is interesting because there's been a lot of talk, and not everybody's been in the same room. And hopefully, everybody could get in the same room because that's the key. If I understand it, there was a group that ran the Southwest Museum, and they were independent, and they at one point said, "We're going to terminate our operation." And then it was put up for sale, if that's the case there, the museum, which is correct. Does anyone disagree with that? And then the... And someone in the state of California bought it, not someone in Oklahoma? Well...
Councilmember Labonte, it wasn't sold. It merged with the Autry.
Well, they dissolved their board...
Right.
...which was their choice. Someone other than us made this happen. Daniel Wright, I'd like you to look at me because I do...
Daniel Wright, I'd like you to look at me, because I do respect you, but when you look like that, it makes me think, you know, no, no, you were looking over there with it. I wanted you to look at me, because you're very important to this community with all the work you've done in transforming saving buildings, conservation, et cetera. But I think that the key is that this building can be physically saved, and how much money it is. And then to find someone with a heart who wants to go into that building. When I say that, whether it's Occidental, or whether it's some other institution, or the Natural History Museum, or part of the Autry, or whatever the case may be, I don't think, in all honesty, they're going to go back to say, "We're going to fix this building," unless there's something, I don't know. And again, I haven't been in all the rooms. I was very disappointed in the last round, because I was not involved with conversations with the Autry. The Autry had their own conversations with whoever they talked to. And everybody's been stressed on this issue here. I think it's important, if you could say that building does have a value to save, because it's historic Highland Park, and I was involved with many things, working years ago, when they took the old water power land and first took the buildings off of Bunker Hill up the street, and took the Palm Station up the street, and the church, I don't know where the church came from, but the church came up the street, to Heritage Square. All this evolution has taken place. And as a child, going from Ivanhoe Elementary School to Southwest Museum, and a very special day when my wife got out of Norris, USC, her battle with cancer, we went and visited the Southwest Museum. So it's a very special place in my history, but I also know relationships start and they end. And the relationship of the old Southwest ended, and they acquired it, to wherever the process is, and whether they have it. So how we have to work, I know, Richard West, you've met with Mr. Reyes, and you're having positive conversations with the Autry?
Well, let me put it this way, Councilman LeBard. I think we, as a city, need to come up with financial instruments that puts real money into the process of saving that building. How we do that will depend on what Mr. Lee's report will define. I strongly believe that there's enough stakeholders in this region, in this city, that will see the viability of this building. The question is, we as municipal leaders, if you will, can lay forth that strategy, and that's what I'm hoping we can do together. What has happened in the past is in the past, from my point of view. From here on, we need to look at how we establish this very important facility as a priority, given all our challenges as a city, for all the reasons you've already stated. So that's where I believe we need to go. And I think we have created a dialogue where we are getting stronger. The Autry has been positive in allowing us access and allowing us to work with them. I met with Mr. West, and he has a very positive attitude about working any direction that's going to be constructive. The committee folks have every reason to feel a sense of, maybe despair is too extreme, but a sense of loss, and that it's closed, and now it's beginning to open little by little. But we need to continue improving and looking at how we can bring it back to life. So I hope with the same vigor we've given the Getty Museum, we've given the Griffith Park Observatory, we've given all the museums, I think it's Cabrillo, over in San Pedro.
Right. Cabrillo and the Observatory are city property. It's not city property. Getty is on their own, but-
But it is a city constructed, it is a building that was created by the first city librarian, and it is, for all intents and purposes, a historic landmark that is very profound to the city's history.
That's privately owned.
That's privately owned.
Right. Like USC. You know, I mean, we could spend all the money at UCLA, but we can't spend the money at USC, because UCLA is public.
I think that's where we have an option. We, as policymakers, can decide how we use our resources for the city's history. And whether it's public or private, it's coming upon us to move forward in a positive way to make this building come back to life. We have those options.
And I think that's what the most thing is, to see the guts of the building, and the strength in it, how you could make it like John Marshall High, saved. Anybody go to LA High here? They didn't save LA High, but they saved Marshall High, which was important, a historic building, 1931. Saved the building, and then what use could go in there that makes sense and connectivity? I know the work of others, even before you, Mr. Reyes, to get the rail line there. I think of Richard Alatorre, who built the bridges. If he didn't build the bridges, they wouldn't have built the rail. Because they built the bridges, restored the bridges first, and then Mike Hernandez's work and your great work has all made a difference. So I just want to try to get everybody in the same room, and everybody trying to know that maybe what has gone on before, because if you, if, I just don't think we're going to have success if you have, okay, if this is a new day, this is our working group, Mr. Alarcon, then we have to, no, we have to work together. And even whatever sins of the past, if you feel they're sins, if you hold them as sins, you're not going to find solutions to that. I don't believe. So trying to find a cooperative spirit and someone who would nurture that facility, that's the key. Thank you.
Well, you know, I've got 47 days left in office. I'm an outside observer. So it's been my observation that this is, this is a fundamental Cowboys versus Indians showdown. And as long as it's a showdown, we're not going to have success. Somebody's going to lose. And there's no reason why we shouldn't value the contribution of the Autry Foundation with regard to Cowboys. At the same time, we want to preserve the tremendous and valuable assets of the Southwest Museum to exhibit for the community. The largest difference is money. The most successful museums in Los Angeles have always been funded by deep-pocket private interests. That's, that's simply the case. This museum doesn't have anybody with deep pockets backing it up. And, and so we tried to manipulate the process. We thought if we latched it onto the Autry's deep pockets, that somehow those deep pockets would get to the Southwest Museum. Obviously, that didn't happen. And what is in the agreement, and that's the other thing that we didn't mention, we're bound by certain agreements here, that, 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 you know, as we review them and look at the, you know, who didn't, who did what and who didn't do what relative to the contract, that guides us as we move forward as well. So honestly, the success of the Southwest Museum hinges more than anything else, not on what Autry does, not on what the council does, but as a group with the community to define an ongoing revenue stream for this museum. And if that is not accomplished, then I fear the whole thing could be lost. And it really doesn't matter who's managing it, who owns it, who controls it, and whose interest it is. You know, short of money, there's, this thing is going to fail. And, and so, you know, I want to, Mr. Reyes has been very gracious, because this, this museum was in somebody else's district, and he, he has only recently come on, and we're both going to be out of office in 47 days. So in addition to the recommendations that are made to continue the dialogue with the community, to continue to hammer out the final report, I'd like to instruct the, as part of the recommendation, to instruct the Bureau of Engineering to quickly sit down with the new council member of the first district, whoever that may be, and educate them, even before July 1st, if we know who that person is, to educate them as to what is going on with your aspect of the museum. I would also like to add the CAO and the CLA to do the same thing, so that they can hit the ground running with regard to Southwest. I can tell you one thing, without the city council member championing this issue, not a whole lot is going to happen. And so you really have to make that a part of the strategy.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I think what's important, and it's with the understanding that, I believe the observations does define a certain reality, but I also know that this museum, as we have had these discussions, is not going to be a stagnant place. It has a lot of potential for a whole range of possibilities. And I think the beauty of this process is that the community is defining itself, it's promoting concepts and ideas. Autry has been open in terms of looking at possibilities as well. So I want to leave it on a positive note in terms of the future of this location, because I do believe it has that capacity. But I appreciate what you just said, and there is a chief of staff who's been working this for some time now, so I'm hoping, as you just said, we don't know who's going to be the next council member, but I have high aspirations.
So do I.
All right.
Can I just add to your motion that the director, CLA, to look if any model in the country, whether it's in Philadelphia, Seattle, or Atlanta, or wherever, has this situation where there's a private museum, and how cities, because this is not the first time a museum has changed in our country's history. Is there a model that we can go after that would see success for us, whatever that formula would be, if you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, there are a lot of, you know, I think in terms of revenue, you know, the best resource would be to get average daily attendance out of LA Unified. I don't think anybody's ever approached LA Unified, but that's, the kids need the education, and this certainly would qualify for average daily attendance, as other museums have used. And so, but unless you come up with a consistent revenue stream like that, you're not going to be able to continue to maintain the facility and make it safe and ensure that people have an enjoyable educational experience and want to come back. So that's, that's the challenge. And so I look forward to the report. I'm happy to help out, you know, even when I'm out of office, but-
You championed the saving of the Turner's Museum.
Well, but we did it. So there's a difference there. So we, there is, this one is a greater challenge, quite frankly. And so I applaud the community for your passion. I just drove by there the other day. I still haven't been in there, so I will, I would love to just go see it. No average daily attendance from the San Fernando Valley, yeah. Anyway, with that, we're going to, we continue this matter, or do we send it on? We're just going to wait for the report to come back?
Let's continue this matter so we can get the report back.
Okay, so when we get the report back in June, right? Okay, we're looking forward to it. Thank you very much. We have a couple of public comment cards. I think we're done with our agenda, right?
Yes, we are. I'm going to change.
Please do, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Public comment, we have Dr. Williams. Hey, comb your hair. Dr. Williams? Oh, he's gone. Daniel Wright?
Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard. I'll address those two items. I've submitted for the record in Council File 11-928-S1, two items today. One is an item having to do with the fact that we have a sequo appeal involving alleged piecemealing of the development of the Autry's basement before this council. We filed that appeal on the 1st of November 2011. It's now been 18 months, and we've not been given a hearing. In preparation for that hearing, I filed on behalf of a number of concerned individuals public records requests with the Recreation Parks Department to gather additional documents about some of the issues in this appeal. And since their response letter of November 27th, I have not heard a thing back. On January 18th, I demanded that they, and I also gave them new public records requests, and they have not responded whatsoever. So we need those documents and an appropriate response from the department, and it should concern you, because one of the things that we're investigating is whether or not, back in 2011, it was really true what they told you at council, that the agendas were not distributed for that meeting because of the Information Technology Agency. Looks like the proof is developing in a different direction. I want to call to your attention this exhibit, which shows a series of things, which demonstrates the Autry keeps talking out of both sides of the mouth in these proceedings. It is their plan to expand this basement for exhibition uses, and this exhibit here, blown up on the actual plan that was before you in 2011, shows non-public spaces of their former collection area being converted to public spaces. This is simply a piece that was approved in 2011, and you have not been told the truth. And it is time that the council stop listening to the Kool-Aid from Autry and be willing to apply some political leverage. I think that's the way we get. It needs to be collaboration and cooperation, and we need to hold them to the fire, as many people have said.
Okay, thank you. Being that this is public comment, it would be inappropriate for us to comment on anything that you presented, but we do have your documents for submission to the file. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, this meeting is adjourned.